Welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Biloxi City Council on January 23rd, 2024. Being that there is a change to the agenda, do I have a motion to amend the agenda? Motion by Mr. Glavine. Second by Mr. Lawrence. All in favor? Unanimous votes. Carrie, will you read those changes, please?
To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5R Resolution authorizing emergency extension of contract with Ring Central and adding 5S Resolution accepting the bid of Benacom Computer Company for telephone services.
Move the agenda as amended.
Okay, motion to move it as amended by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote. This brings us to the presentation agenda. Mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. We want to welcome everybody. I know we've got an exciting event in a few minutes and we're gonna ask the people in charge to come up, but welcome everybody to the city council. Mardi Gras is just a number of days away and we're all excited about it. So, Ms. Hunt Trip, Ms., uh, what's your sister?
Hunt Trip, that's my name. Because I was a hunt, now I'm a trip, so. Okay, Mayor Gillich, City Council, and citizens, my name is Martha Hunt Trip, and I'm the chairperson of the 25th Annual Shoebox, Mardi Gras Shoebox Float Contest. And that's why we have all these people here today. I don't think they're here to hear you vote against something. They're here to see their kids get something. My mother Ruth Hunt loved children. She and my dad Walter Skeet Hunt gave many years to Gulf Coast Carnival Association. It was my mother's wish for children to have the opportunity to be a part of Mardi Gras. So she started the Children's Marching Parade, which will be on February the 3rd this year, and the Shoebox Contest, Shoebox Float Contest. My sister Susan Hunt and I make sure these events continue. Today, we're here to recognize and honor the winners of the 25th Annual Shoebox Float Contest. I need to tell you who the sponsors were and how much they helped us because that's where we get our money from. So let me tell you, the sponsors are Berry's U-Pullit Auto Parts, Biloxi Bay Area Chamber, Biloxi Public Schools, the City of Biloxi, Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum, David N. Harris Law Firm, Gulf Coast Carnival Association, MP Design Group, and Butch Ostelit. I would like to thank Sherry Bell, she's right over here. She's the Director of the Recreation Department. And then Erica Peste, she's the Director of the Biloxi Visitor Center. And Ms. Hunt, she is everything. But she also serves on the Coastal Mississippi Mardi Gras Museum for their help today. They lined everybody up and got them in order. After this presentation, the winners and the parents will be honored with a reception at the Biloxi Visitor Center where their floats have been on display. They will be honored with King Cake Punch and their 2024 Mardi Gras shirts. So make sure you get your shirt before you leave the activity this afternoon. Before honoring our winners, I want to recognize the people that also have been very helpful with this. Ms. Kate Cattellis, she's right there. She's President of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber. Tana Ross Simmons, she's the Executive Director of the Biloxi Bay Area Chamber. Keith Wade, right here, he's the Captain of the Gulf Coast Carnival Association. And Ms. Anna Harris, right there, she's the Executive Director of the Gulf Coast Mardi Gras Museum. Today, they will help give you your rewards. We appreciate them supporting this event. Thank you so very much. Grades four, seven, six in the Biloxi Schools, Nativity and Our Lady of Fatima were extended an invitation to participate. At each school, the art teacher or an assigned teacher was responsible for the contest. We could not have done it without these people. I want to thank Ms. Cummings, Ms. Ewing, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Hoxsey, Ms. Kirk, Ms. Lyons, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Thomas. I know Ms. Hoxsey's here. Can you hold up your hand right there? Okay. I don't know if any other art teachers are here, but I truly appreciate all the art teachers helping us with this activity. Each overall first place, second place, third place, and honorable mention float contest winner will receive today. A cash award, a certificate, a set of Lively Spellbound Deblims, a set of beads from the Gulf Coast Carnival Association, a 2024 Free Family Pass to the Mardi Gras Museum, and a set of beads from the Mardi Gras Museum. The students did an excellent job. When I was putting up all their floats, the visitors came in, they were overwhelmed with how great they looked. They said they were beautiful and original. The cash awards are first place, they will get $30. Second place, they get 20. Third place, 10. An honorable mention gets 5. They will also remember they get a chance to march in our Mardi Gras Parade, Children's Parade, February the 3rd. Parents, if you brought your forms that they can participate, make sure you give them to me so we can get them registered. I think we're gonna be riding on the tour train. We're thinking about a fire truck, but I think we've got too many of us to get on the fire truck. So I think we're gonna ride on the tour train. Hopefully, parents, you brought your permission forms and I'll collect them. Mayor Gillich, come on up. He's going to give you your certificates. And then we have Ms. Cattellis, she's going to give you your money. Okay? And then Captain Keith Wade will give you your deblims. And then our wonderful Ms. Anna Harris will give you each a Mardi Gras bag. And in that bag are your beads, okay? Extra stuff. It was too much to let you hold it all, so that's why we came up with the bags. Okay. First, I'm gonna talk, gonna announce the first place winners. And then we'll do second place.
Let me say something.
Oh, okay. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Well, I gotta wanna say one other thing. When the kids came in, they wanted to know whether they're gonna get to see the mayor. Whether they're gonna get to shake his hand. And yes.
We already did that.
We already did that.
But I'm really excited about today. You know what February 13th is, right? With Mardi Gras, okay. Well, let me say something first before I say that. This is my favorite son-in-law. He's responsible for Mardi Gras. He's the captain of Mardi Gras. So I'm real proud to have everything. That's right. My favorite. He's my only son-in-law, but he's my favorite. No, but we love him. We love him. So it's not only Mardi Gras, but you know what it is? It's Biloxi's 325th birthday. So that's pretty strong, pretty remarkable. So we're really excited. You know, this, these awards are special, but even more special because it's 325 years of Biloxi. Martha?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're gonna start with our, you ready? Okay. Our first place winners. And the first five winners that I'm going to announce are all fourth grade students. All right, so Harvey Gates, Back Bay. Alondra Mejia. From Gonfo Elementary. Carrie Agradin, from Nativity BVM. Violet Gentry, North Bay. Bryce Farkas, Our Lady of Fatima. Armani Jonas, Pops Ferry. And then our last one, a first place, is Lily McMillan. She's a fifth grader at Upper And I want to tell you that she won last year at North Bay. So this is her second time. Mayor, I'd like for all of you that are here, please go behind there and get your picture taken with all of the students. So y'all kinda get close.
Try not to touch the mayor.
What? I can't hear you. I don't know anything. Okay, you have to say it to the second group about how old Biloxi is because they weren't in here.
Oh. Okay, February 13th is what, Mardi Gras? You know, it's a special Mardi Gras because that day, we'll celebrate, Biloxi will celebrate its 325th birthday. How about
Okay, now these students, you all will go out that door and look at the camera because they're gonna see your face, all right? Look at the camera. Look at the camera.
There you go.
Ah.
Look at her. Look at her.
Okay, these are the second place winners, second place winners. Wait till I call your These, the first, the first five people are all from fourth grade, okay? Isalina Landeverby, Back Bay. Grace Miller, Gonfo. Madik Sumro, Our Lady of Fatima. Delane Brown, Pops Ferry. Now the rest, Lucy Kavanaugh, fifth grade, Nativity BVM, from Lower Street. This is her returning. She won last year, y'all, so make sure. All right, Lily Agaros, fifth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. And she won last year, too. So we have some, lots of returning happy people. And our last one is, no, excuse me, Lily Agaros. Did I, I did that one, I'm sorry. Logan, I'm sorry, Logan Simmons. Sorry, Logan, sixth grade, Upper Elementary. Okay, now we need to get your picture taken with everybody. Now we will do third place winners. Zoe An, oh, excuse me. Before I start that, the first few will be fourth graders, okay? So Zoe Andrews, Nativity BVM. Suraj Derojsh, North Bay. Olya Fish, Our Lady of Fatima. The next two are from Biloxi Upper Elementary, Brandon Lehman, fifth grade. Lily Plager, sixth grade, Biloxi Upper Elementary. Okay, now we need to get your picture. Okay, Mayor, we didn't tell the, we didn't tell the third place.
We're gonna tell you, on February 13th, you know what that is, right? Mardi Gras Day, that's what this is all about. It's a very special day because on that day, February 13th, it's Biloxi's 325th birthday. How about that?
And these are our honorable mentions. And the first six are all from fourth grade. So here we go. Alexander Rourke, Back Bay. Asvaldo Mendoza, Gonfo. Sophia Elwood, North Bay. John Handley Clark the Fourth, Our Lady of Fatima. Alora Mayer, Pops Ferry. Okay, that's it. And get our picture taken? I don't know.
For the council? You got six of them?
No, there's one was not here. Oh, I don't know. Did everybody get your money? You get your money? Did you, did you get your money? Where's your money? You put it in there, okay. All right, making sure. I want to thank you, parents. You all can leave now. I know you're anxious to get to the Visitor Center. We'll have cake and punch. And you will be able to take your float home, too.
I would like y'all to give, Martha and Susan, a big hand for doing all this like a well-oiled machine. Thank you, Martha. Thank you, Susan. What?
You want me to take this? You're done?
Yeah, that concludes my report.
Yeah, there was. I knew.
In the beginning. Yeah, well, yeah, it's updated, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, council reports. George Lawrence?
I thought I'd bring up one thing on the consent agenda, is the bait shop. They put a new lease. All I want to do is thank Pat Cluse for 30 years or whatever he done servicing with the bait shop. Didn't want a heck of a job. So, you know, I'd like to honor him. Maybe tonight, we close the meeting in his honor. Cause he put a lot of good time in. That's a tough job, 4:00, 4:30 every morning. And he did a good job. So I hope the next group come in, does half as good as he did, they're gonna be in good shape. So I just want to bring that up about that. And I was gonna tell them about the 325, 325 years. I wasn't back there. I was close, but I wasn't there. And you have to thank Martha and Susan Hunt for what they do. The kids love doing this, the parade, taking them down to visitor center. And like they said, they got to meet the mayor. They're all excited. That's a good thing. So they keep doing it every year. They're proud of them, too. Okay, that's all.
Mr. Guines?
No report.
Mr. Dimming?
Couple requests for updates on the light situation at Pops Ferry. I thought I saw Ms. Bell, or either of them.
On the soccer complex. So I have, I got with Peter. We had to have the bond council look at it because it's a lease, to make sure that everything, we were doing everything correctly because there's some special rules about that that I'm not familiar with. They looked at that last week. I gotta get the final set of specs to them just to take one quick look at, and then we're gonna have it out to bid. I planned to already have it out in bid in January, and then we discovered we need to have them look at it because it was a lease.
Okay, so we plan to go out to bid here pretty quickly?
Yes, yes. I'll get that to them to look at this week. And he said it shouldn't take him but a second because the specs aren't very big. Take him just a minute, day or two to look at it, and then we'll be ready.
If all goes well, what's our timeframe then to actually get lights out there?
If all goes well, I would expect that we would have lights. We'll advertise for a month, probably another, at most another month to get the lease documents in place into council. So probably, you know, April or May, we'll start seeing some lights go up.
Okay.
At the latest.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bell, I know we've, I've seen some email communications that we've done. Is there any update with regard to the, the other stuff for the dog park?
Have all, have all of it to get out there immediately, the park, I don't know.
Wonderful. That's good news. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, Fire Station 5, we're still looking for funding source, I'm assuming. It's just, I know those guys work hard. I think they're the, that's the last station that we need to renovate, I think. The others are either new or have been renovated. MGM Park, I know we were looking at naming rights. I don't know where we are on that. I know that baseball season will crank up soon. They'll be printing tickets and all that. Is there an update?
Yeah, we got a request for information and request for, we've had some informal discussions, but we're, next week, we'll, official RFP will go out.
Okay.
And they're taking down the MGM signs next week. So it'll be the no-name stadium. Chucker Stadium, I guess. The MGM has asked to be able to take the signs down.
Okay. So Peter, you said that an RFP is going out?
Well, a request for information. We're gonna have a suggested pricing and send it out to some people we've been talking to informally and give them a deadline of, I think like end of February to respond. And, you know, we want to pick the right person. We don't want to just throw it out there and, and be under charred, under, receive a small amount just to have somebody's name on it. We want to get the right, the right person.
Thank you. And a person or two's asked me about the Veterans Avenue Pier. And I know that, what, that the Gaming Commission ruled the site eligible, if I remember correctly. Are we waiting for any appeals or anything like that, or?
Now, their, their final engineering plan should be, should be completed by now. And I think he, I don't know if they're gonna put it out for bid themselves, or I think they're getting their quotes now to, to get started.
On the pier. So in several months, we might be seeing something out there, perhaps?
Yeah, we could, we could have them, let me get a formal, let me get information from them since they're building it.
That's fine. I just know some, some folks have gotten excited about that. I was just checking. That, that concludes my report. Questions? Thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Madam President. Both of us, it's kind of a coincidence. You were making that announcement of Biloxi's birthday. My wife just texted me and she said, do you know what February 13th is? And I said, yeah, it's Biloxi's 325th birthday. She said, no. And I said, well, it's Mardi Gras. And she said, no. And I said, well, what is it? And she said, it's the day before Valentine Day. Don't forget. So, anyway. So I got a couple of things. First of all, shout out to Billy Ray and specifically Jody Ewing and Engineering. Coast Connect has been installing some fiber cable and they've got about 25 or 30 guys just, I mean, going through the whole neighborhood in Pelican Bayou. And he's been Johnny on the spot. If they've clipped a cable or if there's been any issues, he's been the conduit to resolve some things. I really appreciate him. He went a step further in meeting with Destiny Plantations.
Him and his name, Jody Ewing, just remember.
Yeah, Jody Ewing. I thought I said that. But, but he also went a step further, meeting with the HOA of Destiny Plantation, which is next on the drawing board. And I've heard from several of those members and they were blown away. And they just wanted to make sure that they appreciate that proactiveness. There's another issue with some erosion control. Director Crell's office responded to it. His inspectors went out there, worked with the contractor. They're installing a life storage building on the corner of Cedar Lake and Old Highway 67. There were some erosion due to some of the rains and they put four, four layers of silt fencing. They seeded the entire area and they also put some mats on the slopes to prevent any of that runoff or intruding into the adjacent properties. And I really appreciate that as well. And finally, yesterday, the Mississippi Sound Coalition filed a legal issue or filed a lawsuit invoking the, the Marine Mammal Protection Act. And they had a press conference to kind of go over the details. In a nutshell, it simply says the Corps has an obligation under the Marine Mammal Protection Act to have a plan or an alternative plan, or they looked at all ways that this polluted water, when they opened the spillways, can be minimized. And it just puts a little bit more onus on the Corps if they make those decisions to give it a little bit more thought. I had the opportunity to speak and I said, not only is it a Marine Mammal Protection Act, it should be a land mammal and a human mammal protection act or a human rights issue because our very way of life is being threatened. And if they, if they start doing that again, we're gonna, we're gonna feel those effects as much, if not more, the last time they did it. And, you know, we talked about the effect on occupancies. When they did it in 2019, occupancies went from our summer season in the 80s and 90% range, plummeted down to the 40% and below. When all of a sudden, everybody started reading the algae blooms, the polluted water, and all the negative publicity. And it's not just the investors of those hotels and hospitality related businesses. It's the, I'm telling you, it's the frontline workers that make minimum wage and they depend on that income and those hours. And, you know, there ain't no telling how it affected them. And what they had to do or what they couldn't do because of somebody not caring about opening those spillways. And they said, they'll have to deal with it. We're not gonna have to deal with it. So I hope this is a big step forward in keeping people accountable for just having an open ticket to kill our dolphins and to ruin the Mississippi Sound. And I hope we can prevent that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I need to spread upon the minutes, the City of Biloxi has received the following proposals for municipality depository services for the beginning period of January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2025. Cadence Bank, Hancock Whitney the First, Peoples Bank, Community Bank, Trustmark National Bank, and Regions Bank.
Dixon?
Yeah.
Could I ask Peter a question? Peter, on the pier, on veterans, is there a limit on the length or the height and the width of the pier?
We've given some, some, on length and width, and we're still expecting about $3 million investment to do the things that kind of make it special. You know, the pier and the gaming, two separate issues. We're, you know, we're looking at a commitment to, to build something significant on that footprint. So it could So it could be three hundred feet with twenty feet in, you know, but it's about three million dollar investments, we're gonna see what works best. The shape, whether it's wider at, at the north end, or narrowed down to, you know, with some pavilion at the end of it. So we're going through that design right now, and we've expressed, is it Moran? Terry Moran with the design, but it's, right now, they're gonna be running some numbers in one of two configurations.
Thank you. Excuse me, I, I know that's, I think that's in the, what would you call it, the flight path?
Yeah.
I think, I just know that we have to be sensitive to the height, I don't think if it's a story or two-story, but I'm thinking with all the activity that, that might be coming in the future, that's something for us to be cognizant of.
There have been notified that, that in, in, and our newest appointment to, General Peterson, brought that to everyone's attention with regard to the height of whatever.
Right, there'll be some, right, there'll be some restrictions because of our joint land use study with Kessler.
Yeah, I mean, and that's a must, that's a definitely, they're, they're aware, that, that those are showstoppers, and we don't wanna degrade any kind of the capacity and components of, of Kessler.
Right. Thank you, Mayor.
The flight plan right there is ninety-five feet. That's right off the air, airway itself, the runway, and that's the height, it's ninety-five feet.
And again, I think, the, the situation with, with the South Beach, I don't know what that height is, but that's ten stories, I think? Anyway, I don't know what, what that would be, but yeah, they're aware that, you know, that's a no-go on any of a infringement of the flight paths.
We accepted a height from Kessler when they did that, like about twenty years ago, so, that's the height, ninety-five feet.
Get it? Alright, moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Carrie? Nope, I'm sorry, public agenda, citizen comments, each person gets three minutes to speak aloud. If you come to this table here, speak your name, address for the record, as well as write it down on this sheet of paper provided. My left, your right, anyone would like to speak?
Hello, I'm Teresa Thompson, fifteen oh six Avalon in Biloxi. I'm here opposed to the rezoning on Rodenburg, the case number twenty-three one oh two PC. I've handed you a copy of a, the code, a copy of the map amendment rezoning review standards. It also, and a copy of an expanded zoning map for that particular area of Rodenburg, as well as on the back sheet, a color code of what the, the colors mean on it. There are nine map amendment review standards, and I'm gonna discuss, discuss three of them. The first two are covered in LDO three, two, four B, three B, one and two, and also by the Mississippi statutes, which requires the requester to approve two things, a mistake in the original zoning, or a public need. The lots were zoned correctly as single-family dwellings with over two hundred RS residential family homes on or west of Rodenburg. And if you show it, it has a mark for the north, you show this part right here, all that orange is RS seven-five neighborhood. It all starts at Rodenburg, and there is like seven different streets within that category, and they all either, they have four ingress and egress, one to Pass Road, and three of them to Rodenburg. And there's over two hundred houses in that particular area, so I consider that a very large R seven-five neighborhood. The two lots in question that are circled at the top of the, close to the northern part by the Pass Road, and along with twelve other homes are on the line from the NBs, which is the neighborhood business, they're in the sort of a pekish, peach color. Along with twelve other homes are on the line to the R, from the NBs to the RM thirties, which is the green on the bottom of the, the bottom of the zoning map. Only seven of them have Rodenburg addresses, the others face interior streets. All fourteen of these houses touch or are next to another RS seven-five lot in the neighborhood. Other than for the NB on Pass Road, this neighborhood is surrounded by residential housing. There is no detailed facts and figures documenting, mock documentation that I've found showing a public need for commercial activity on the west side of Rodenburg, within this neighborhood. All zoning documentation for R seven-five shows no commercial activity allowed. These two lots are part of the RS seven-five neighborhood to the west of Rodenburg and south to the RM thirty properties. Allowing this rezone can set a precedent for other changes to RS seven properties here in Rodenburg or other RS seven-five residential neighbors. I am opposed to it, and I'd appreciate y'all vote against it and preserve this RS seven-five neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson, anyone else on my left, your right, that would like to get up and speak? If not, anyone on my right, your left, that would like to get up and speak? Anyone else? If not, citizen comments are now closed. This brings us to the policy agenda, Ms. Carrie?
Coordinates to approve a zoning map amendment for two parcels of land from RS seven-five medium-density single-family residential to limited business for property located at two eighty-five and two eighty-nine Rodenburg Avenue.
Previously moved by Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Mr. Tisdale, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, this is a, one of these things that we put inside of the R seven-point-five neighborhood, what we shouldn't be doing. But there's really, there's no public need at all, there's definitely no mistake in the zoning. So I know two major items that you always have to have to change the zone, we don't qualify for either one of those. I'm asking fellow councilmen to vote this down because of those two reasons, no public need and no mistake in the zoning. It's all R seven-five, and it should stay that way.
Thank you.
So you made a motion to deny this?
No, it's a motion to put it on the table. I think, I think it was a motion and second already to put it on the table. So we either voted up or down.
Okay, he motioned it, so, alright, Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, Jerry, if you will. In, looking through the transcript, there are two properties, both adjacent. Yeah, the last two residential properties, before you get to the intersection of Pass Road and Rodenburg, right just south of a commercial business. And the applicant wanted to make the one, the farthest north of the two, wanted to renovate that as a duplex.
That's correct.
And is, is that the reason why a limited business zone is required?
Well, no, sir, actually, if you look at the, the map.
Okay.
On the, on the west side, this is Rodenburg, this is Pass Road at the top, on the right-hand side is zone to LB, and those are duplexes all the way down Rodenburg already. So when the gentleman came in to speak to me about changing the zoning so that he can have a duplex, I recommended that he go with LB on that side, because he's already got LB right across the street, and because LB would be what we call transitional zoning from NB to LB to the single-family residential that's there. The duplexes, and he was asked specifically, are you gonna use these for short-term rental, and he said, no. So that's in the minutes, if you've, if you've got your copy of your minutes, you can see that. And if he did try to do short-term rental, he'd have to come back to the planning commission and city council to get approval to do that. But the reason I recommended LB was because there's already LB right across the street that has duplexes on it.
Can he renovate that northernmost of those two parcels where he wants to renovate that structure into a duplex? Can he make that renovation without a change in zoning?
It, no, it's single-family right now, and he couldn't, he couldn't do a duplex on there with single-family zoning, so he's having to go to a different zoning in order to do that. Now, he would still have to submit plans to us about the way that that house is going to be divided into two units.
Right, but, but there is no other option, if he wants to put a, a duplex or renovate that structure into a duplex, he has to have a change in zoning.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else?
How did the planning commission vote on that?
Eleven zero to approve it.
Thank you.
I just wanna be clear, crystal clear, and get this into the record, this is not a conditional use for short-term rentals.
No.
Correct.
Just a zoning change, and like I said, any attempt to do short-term rental there is conditional use even in LB, so they would have to come back and go all the way through the process to get short-term rental.
Yep, are the developers here?
Not sure.
Are the developers here? Are the owners, developers here? If they were, I'd just like to hear from them, if, if they were in attendance. Okay, thank you.
Jerry, Jerry, are there any other, I don't believe there are any other limited business zones between the railroad tracks and Pass Road, except for that corner on Pass Road, used to be VJ Speed Shop or an automotive store, whatever, but there's nothing else on the west side of Rodenburg in that stretch?
Not on the west side, no, sir.
Okay, it's all residential.
That's, that's great.
Anyone else?
Just a couple of things, all these homes on the left side, the west side, they pull in and out of the major thoroughfare Rodenburg, not into a neighborhood, correct? Their driveways are in, in and out of Rodenburg, not?
Those, yeah, those houses actually face the interior roads along Rodenburg. And then you're talking about these two that we're talking about?
Yeah.
They do back out into Rodenburg, yes.
Right, that's what I was asking.
Existing single-family house, and we've got pictures of them up there, if you wanna take a look.
I mean, I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear, it's next, it's next to a form of commercial use, cross the street as limited business, this isn't an application for short-term rental, doesn't affect the, the ongoings of inside a neighborhood, it's completely on the outside. I see nothing wrong with it.
And LB, LB is the least intensive business zone that we have.
Dixon? Jerry, y'all know, this is still RS seven-five residential, single-family neighborhood. And you affecting the zoning change, you affecting the right to the R seven-five neighborhood. So you can say what's across the street and everything, this sits inside an R seven-five neighborhood, single-family, and that's the way it should stand. Once you start breaking it up, you're breaking up everything. And you know that, and like you said, you told the guy you requested that, that was his shot. But to me, it's the same thing we've been fighting for the last four or five years, of tearing up some of these R seven-five neighborhoods, but some guy almost had two houses instead of one. So why, why we affect this many residents in that area, for one guy who wanted change? Every time somebody comes around, we just can't change our zone, because somebody wants to do something different. We have these LDO for a reason, so we need to keep this a single-family residence like it was zoned originally and correctly.
Anyone else? All in favor? One, two, three, all, all against? Oh, can you swear it? Okay, so four, two. Moving on, Resolution B.
Resolution to grant preliminary and final subdivision plat approval for twenty-two lot residential subdivision located at ninety-six thirty West Oakland Road.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to table this until after the special election in Ward Seven, so that we have a representative representing that ward here to, to discuss and offer input and vote on this matter. So my motion would be to table, I guess until the first. Right, okay, so I'll make a motion then.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Lawrence, any more discussion?
I do, so this is a resolution to grant preliminary final plat, was this approved for the development previously? Wasn't this project approved previously by this council, or, or not?
No, this is, this is the first time it's come in before the council, it went to the planning commission. Councilman Barrett had asked that it be tabled, you know, before waiting on it, and I spoke with the developer about that, and he said, we have a significant amount of money invested in this that is really draining interest from us, you know, and every day that we wait is, you know, more money that we have to, and so.
Do we know of any opposition, any petitions, anything that have come before saying that we don't want this, this is gonna be intrusive, or, or hurt us?
The gentleman, the one gentleman that came that spoke against it, actually wasn't speaking against it, he came to the planning commission and wanted the city to put a connector in closer to his house. He said, because right now I have to travel two miles, but he was not opposed to this, this project.
Okay.
How did the planning commi, did anyone show up at the planning commission, you, you said it was just one guy?
That one person, he, he didn't have any opposition to this.
And no real opposition, so it's pretty much an eleven oh vote?
It was, yes, sir.
Eleven oh vote, okay, I don't see any reason to hold that up.
It's appropriate to make a motion at this time to table it until we have a new councilperson in Ward Seven, which would be, I think, the first meeting in March. Since the special election is February twenty-seventh, I'd make that motion to table it until that first council meeting in March.
We got a motion to table by Mr. Tisdale, second by Mr. Lawrence, all in favor? No, he seconded it?
He motioned to table it, Dr. Tisdale.
Tisdale?
I did.
He made a motion to table it.
He made a motion to table it.
Motion to put it on the table?
Tisdale.
Tisdale.
You all seconded it?
Yes.
Why are you confusing me?
And now we're, now we're in discussion, now we're in discussion about tabling it.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The process, this, um, this preliminary final subdivision plat, what comes next to the process? If, in fact, we move forward with this, and the new councilperson elected has a problem with it, even though nobody's come out in opposition against it, if he stirs up some problems, can we shut this down at that point?
If, if there's something that we consider a violation of what's going on, one of the things unique about what's being proposed is that these lots that are being proposed are going against existing roads, all of them face existing roads, so the utilities are already there to supply this. That's why they were able to do the preliminary and the final at the same time. If they were gonna have to install infrastructure, water and sewer, and those kind of things, they would've had to come to you separately with the preliminary first, and then engineering would've overseen the infrastructure improvements. Now, when they get to phase two of this project, which is a large parcel that's in the back of these that face the running roads there, they'll have to put in infrastructure, because that's on the private property not facing the street.
Do we have declared candidates yet for Ward Seven special election? Does anyone know, Mr. Mayor, is there any declared candidates?
At least one, I think maybe two.
My concern is if, if there are, and they haven't shown up, and no one's discussed this issue with them, and they haven't presented it, I don't see why it's, we should, as Mr. Guines said, hold this up, it's costing the developers money. If nobody's been in opposition, I just think it, it's a nice respectful gesture, but respect.
And this is, this is Elliot Holmes, who has a great reputation with us for doing what he says he's gonna do, so.
Yeah, Elliot.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of tabling it? All in favor of tabling it? Two. All against? Four.
I move that we process it through.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Guine. Second by Mr. Dimming. Any more discussion? What, what is that for?
If, if the motion fails, it's still on the table.
It's still on the table. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so any more discussion? All in favor of the resolution? One, two, three, four. All against, two. Moving on to resolution C.
Resolution to grant final subdivision plat approval for Cristiano Boardwalk subdivision.
Do you have a motion? I'll motion that.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Gu, uh, Jerry? Go ahead.
This is the 16-lot subdivision that's next to the Shell Station down at the south end of Veterans Avenue. They're proposing to move forward. Their infrastructure is in. They have posted a couple of bonds, one to make sure that the, the road actually goes in. One of the things that's got them delayed right now is that service road is under construction out front. And the second thing that they posted was a maintenance bond to make sure that the utilities all hold up after this is approved. So they're, they're chomping at the bit to get started building those 16 houses down there and we would recommend approval.
Okay.
Is there a representative here? I'd like, I'd like to hear from you, you know? The council would love to hear, you know, directly from you. And tell me what your vision is.
Friday Fountain with Fountain and Associates, 1334 Seaway Road, Suite 202 Gulfport. I'm here on behalf of the developer representing him. I was the design engineer for this project. We helped oversee construction. We've met all the staff requirements for all the life safety conditions, all the water and sewer conditions. We worked with the engineering department and got this thing approved, final closeout. All of our documentation's been completed. And as far as the homes go, we have a design completed in Mr. Jerry's office for the first home and the developer plans to start eight homes as soon as final plat is recorded.
You know what they're generally going to go for? They're going to market them at, have that information?
They have three different footprints of houses. They're going to range from 2,500 to 6,000 square foot. Some of the, most of them are two-story. There is a three-story option, which is the larger plan. I think the range is somewhere in the 800 to 1.4, 1.5 million.
Nice.
Yes, sir. The eight that they're going to begin construction on are already presold. None of those are speculative.
I have a question. Is this, uh, Rob Stinson, is he still involved in this?
Yes, sir. He's involved in the development and he's also going to own at least one of the homes.
Okay. I know he started this a couple of years ago, but never. So I just wondered, why was the holdup for that long?
Uh, well, coordinating with the FEMA project was part of the holdup.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote brings us to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Lawrence, second by Guine. Glavine, we'll start with you. Do you have anything?
Um, I, I just have a question. I know, uh, on this, uh, the first item, 5A, I know we have, I guess, vendors that submit their lowest and best quote. And it just became a, a subject, not necessarily this one, but, but all of them. Lowest and best. Lowest and best could, could include what is my first question, to make sure I'm clarifying this, I think I know what it is. The other thing, considerations of local companies versus maybe somewhere else in the state or even out of state. How does that apply when we're making decisions on approving and authorizing the lowest and best quote?
And it, it kind of followed with my understanding of this particular instance was that a number of quotes, or a quote that was lower than Knight Abbey came in, but was it because that state had a 3% preference for local vendors, that same preference was applied to our local vendors? So that made it, you know, within range and it was very, very, very close. I mean, you know, $400 for the whole scope of the situation. So there was no question with the application of that preference law that Mississippi allows us to, to apply, that this was the lowest and best.
So in this case, one of the questions I would have, if a vendor had significant investment, say they had a, a building that, and total assets of a million dollars that they invested, and would that come into play or is it strictly on the quote?
Nope.
Itself, dollar for dollar?
Nope, nope. The local, that part of the deal is strictly driven by, you know, the purchasing laws of the state of Mississippi. But in, in this instance, the low bidder, which was, you know, like I said, very, you know, we're, we're restricted by using the state's statutes on purchasing, it would have been certainly you and I, in, in, in a local business situation, would have understood the strength of, of, of those proposals. But in, in this case, that preference, and, and in, in my business background, we're dealing with things within the food service and some of these other things, that law applied in, uh, in Louisiana as opposed to Mississippi and, and that made this possible, this award.
Okay. One, one last question, and I don't know if the same principle applies to this. If we had a bid to an outside entity and we have to pay the, the related sales tax and we lose a, a net by, by awarding that contract, even though it may be lower, we pay more or we lose that, that percentage of our sales tax revenue? Is that weighed in the equation at all or is, again, it's the gross dollar for dollar bid?
It, it can be. I mean, it's all a fact-specific situation. It may not be the lowest, but it may be the best. And even without a preference, Knight, Knight Abbey may well have been the best. Even though they weren't the lowest. But this has been a, it's a, it doesn't happen that much and it's not really local Biloxi. It's, it covers the whole state. And if you're out of state, you can't take advantage. If you had two out-of-state bids, neither of them can take advantage of it. But when you have a Mississippi vendor and any out-of-state vendor. And so I think what this is, 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 we use this as a learning tool to, if we get any of these situations and they appear to be sort of close that we want to really research, because this, this preference was in Louisiana statute, but only under printing. So it took a little bit of more research to find out. It's a specific preference statute only for printing things. Which, which isn't readily available. So it took a little research, but to your original question, even without a preference statute, something very close and given their investment here, it still could have been deemed by the governing authorities to be the best.
No, I appreciate the clarification. I'm just trying to learn it, you know? I thought I knew it and I'm just trying to learn it and to make sure I'm accurate. Thank you.
Go ahead.
How often do we bid this service out?
How long? It's, yeah, it's two years.
Two years.
Two years? So we do this every two years?
It's month to month.
Who's had the, uh, who's had the contract? Did that Louisiana company?
In common.
Yeah, he's been printing.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Mr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item C, this is, uh, two new, I guess it's Ideris Next Video Detection Systems and they're to be installed at Pass Road and Veterans and Division in Bonaki. What's the reason for obtaining this? Is it to monitor traffic or is it to, to be able to change the traffic's signal schedules? I, I'm assuming it's related to traffic to and from Keesler Air Force Base based on the locations, but might not be.
This is a traffic control problem.
So who, I mean, which department's making the request for this, sir?
Public Works.
Public Works. The Public Works will be able to tweak. Is, is that what it does? Is it?
You know, when you pull up this line, there's a little, little camera kind of looking down at you, telling you whether there's somebody there.
Okay.
Which is kind of an old-fashioned technology that's, we're switching to the other.
So these are the sensors that you see at several other lights in the city that?
Whether there's a light, somebody there or not, so that you don't have a, a turning lane. You, you don't have a?
You don't have to wait forever.
Turning lane if there's nobody in the turning lane.
Right, it's more or less motion detection rather than on a time, particular timeframe or whatever.
This is just replacing some of those loop systems.
Okay. On item J, this is a ground lease with DSLD Homes to put a sign at Pops Ferry and Camp Wilkes and they'll pay us 500 bucks a year. How long does it stay? How long does that sign there?
I think we, we have it for a year, renewable, another year, or until the, the last house is sold. So I, I wouldn't expect it to be there more than a year.
Do we do this for other developers?
We've done it, we've done it with, I think, two other developers in Willmark it before.
Okay. But you anticipated being there maybe a year at most? It could be a few months after that? Okay. On item O. Item O is the Securix Agreement for uninsured motorists Identification. Could somebody explain that a little, little more? I have a few questions and, and while the chief is coming up there, I just noticed, I don't know if it's a typo or maybe I read it incorrectly, the word deduced in there and I'm thinking as I read it, that word should be deducted. It's in there a couple of times. I'm just, I don't, I think it makes a whole lot of difference. It's probably a, considered a Scrivener's area. But let me start with a few questions, chief, and then after, after that. Are the citations that are issued, are they City of Biloxi citations or are they citations issued by Securix, the company? Where do, where does that citation come from?
It comes from Securix.
Comes from Securix, okay. And, um, how are unpaid citations dealt with? Because I'm assuming we'll have, these aren't just Mississippi motorists, it's monitoring every motorist, right?
That's correct, yes.
So if, if, if folks decide, I'm not going to, I'm going to pay the citation?
So they'll, they'll get a, at, first, once, uh, once the violation comes through, it'll come to the police department first and we'll sort through those and determine if there's any question about any of them that, that, that we're not, we're not comfortable with. If it is, we can just remove it at that point. There'll be two, maybe three people working on that daily. Then if, if what we send to Securix at that point, they'll issue the citations and send them through the mail. And they'll have three options. They can just pay it, they can, they can enter into a, uh, an agreement to pay a reduced, a reduced amount, or they can, they can come to court, either way. If they come to court, it's our understanding that there'll be a representative from Securix there to deal with it at that point before it ever makes it into the courtroom to see if there's something they can work out then.
Okay. As I recall, I think, I may be wrong, but I think Securix had an agreement with a neighboring city recently in the past and, and there were some issues or challenges and, and that city ended up, I, I guess, dropping what they had planned to do or, or discontinued that.
They, they did. They absolutely did. And that was in the early stages of the company. I went back and talked to their representative about the issues that, that, that they had and all those issues have been resolved. Some of those issues were actually with the company and, and with, uh, the Department of Public Safety getting the information quick enough. And I think there was, uh, there was one of the insurance companies that wasn't reporting as quickly as it should by law. And that, that's all been resolved now. And I, I feel very comfortable with it after talking with them. I was not a big fan of it to begin with, but I feel very comfortable.
Right, and as I understand it, reading through the resolution, the city pays a fee basically to verify this information as it, uh, is, is part of the process. Generated from the citation, so we don't pay the fee, but it's deducted from what the city would collect in all of this. Peter, do you see anything on the horizon in terms of any legal challenges or legal concerns since our, our city to the east had this issue in the past? Chief said that some things have changed now. And the Mississippi Bureau of Investigation, I think, MBI is?
Well, Department of Public Safety.
Department of Public Safety, excuse me, is on board, so.
Matt Tindall's office, which they were not involved initially. Since that time, this system's been in place in Batesville, Senatobia. Pearl, Pearl just did it a month or two ago. And it's, it's been very successful in all those venues and doing what it's supposed to, reduce, reduce the amount of uninsured motors that are on the road.
Do you see any issues? This is just me because I don't have a fine legal mind like, like you do. And chief has a pretty good one. But it doesn't make any difference, a significant difference, whether this citation is mailed from the company or the city or the city's police department that doesn't have any?
I think, I've seen some of the literature, I think it comes from the company as a vendor because this is a service that we're entering into. The, uh, the return address, probably, I think it has in the municipal court department of the city. There is verification of a photograph of the license plate. The, uh, it has a lot more detail, I think, than the Ocean Springs violations did. It has more, uh,
Very technology, too.
More ways to pay, more people to call, better response time. I think they were picking up a lot of commercial tags. I think they screened a lot of that out. Ocean Springs is basically a learning experience for, for all these other cities.
I guess it's the difference between being on the bleeding edge and being on the bleeding edge, huh?
That's good. Very good.
A poor, tapped into humor on a gray day.
Put that down.
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I follow up on that? We were talking about the, oh, you want to go?
Yeah, I was just.
Go ahead.
Is there a limit on how many people can participate with this company or is it unlimited?
I, I think they said they want to cut it off at 10 cities throughout the state. When you get, if you get a ticket in Pearl and you are pinged for not having insurance, if you're driving down here, you would not get pinged again. Once, once you get pinged, it's a, you know, you're, you're sort of there until it gets resolved. Our contract, as you know, basically is covering I-10 and I-110. So, uh, no other cities on the coast, we've been sort of selected or we've been negotiating with them for several months about this, this project. And, uh, but we're the coast, the coast county that would have it.
Let me, let me add too. I think, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that uninsured percentage is about 30%. Is, is that pretty close to what the, the data has revealed? That 30, 30% of the people who are driving are uninsured.
Are uninsured.
And that's, I mean, it'd be a long way correcting those rates that, you know, if it, if we could drive that number down, we're very successful, not only for people, uh, you know, the people who pay uninsured motorist rates. That's what I expect is for the result, of, of satisfactory result is those rates come down because less people in Mississippi are driving without liability insurance.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Again, we're, we're looking at uninsured motors and basically stolen vehicles, so to speak. Those are the two things. And right now, we're looking at mainly the outskirts of the city. We're not honing down on neighborhoods or anything like that at this point.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that was just the main thing. I wanted to make sure I clarified that for the people who are listening because they didn't really understand, um, the dynamics of what was being said. So mainly it's just the outskirts. We're not honing down on neighborhoods or anything like that and making sure that we're on, on the first of, uh, this technology here.
We also clarified that it would not be used for any red light violations or any speeding violations. So that, that's, that's where some of the unclearness was before, but we specifically put that in the contract.
Yeah, red light stop signs, right. Thank you, chief.
One, same, it's a ton of the same stuff. So what we're doing is we have a private company being a part of the police department. This is a private company, correct?
It is a private company.
Okay, so they're gonna be arresting people through this system.
No, so they, they have no, no arrest powers.
Into you, so they bought it, they bought it a process. All of a sudden they.
Now, I'm just saying, they don't have no arrest powers whatsoever, so they, they can only, they can only send out the citations that we allow them to send out once we review them.
Right, so they start the process. The other thing is, how much can you actually collect off this? What does the city gain?
We'll know in a year.
Yeah, no, you say you have no idea.
No, it, it would be, I mean, I'm looking at what Ocean Springs did and I think they collected, uh, I think four hundred thousand in nine months, something like that.
And the only way we can do this is through.
Excuse me, maybe, maybe been four hundred thousand in a year and a half. I, I'm not sure, but it'll be, it'll be several hundred thousand.
I don't know. They have own police department. We don't need a private company running the police department. I'm being involved in it, to put it that way.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Diddel, you have anything else?
Yes, uh, Peter, you had mentioned I-one-ten and I-ten specifically. Would this service include Highway ninety?
Uh, we, it could be on Highway ninety. I don't think there's any initial, where the cameras are, I don't think they're gonna advertise where the cameras are gonna be.
Sure.
But, uh.
But just high volume traffic mostly is what it says.
Probably looking for high volume areas.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Demming?
Peter, I don't know if you've done any research on this and I haven't done enough, um, but there was a federal class action lawsuit filed regarding traffic cameras in twenty twenty-two. Do you know what the resolution, or the basis of that lawsuit was?
Yeah, they were, they were basically proceeding on the statute that said you can't have these sort of cameras for, uh, red lights or speeding laws or any moving violation. And they focused on that as the basis of their lawsuit. The second paragraph of that statute says, these red light cameras only, for these cameras only apply to, uh, red light cameras and speeding laws. So an insurance, an insurance violation was basically exempted from it. And I believe the lawsuit was dismissed by the, on their own after they had a oral argument or two. So I don't think that lawsuit is pending anymore.
All right, the, um. The other concern I have, and you two may have more, uh, knowledge on this issue, but the Sixth Amendment requires confrontation of your, of your, of your accuser. Now, if this is a citation, it is a violation of the law and you're being penalized for it. How do you confront your accuser for a traffic violation for a third party company that sends information to you? Will this third party company be at court every day? Will the representative be there? A representative will be there in every court hearing?
That's what I've been told, yes. I mean, we, we would schedule it to, um, once every couple of, maybe twice a month, they would have these.
Well, how, and, and help me, even in that regard though, if that representative, the company shows up, that representative didn't have first knowledge of what the camera saw, so how do, how do we reconcile the Sixth Amendment?
So I would agree with you if it was a moving violation, but it's not a moving violation. It would be similar to, to a car tag. It, a car tag would be a tax violation. And it's very clear if, if your tag was, was legal or not, it's very clear whether you had insurance at that time or not. If you can show you had insurance at that time, then.
Well, it's actually different because the car tag is visible by the eye, whether you have insurance isn't. And so you have to search into somebody's personal or private information to determine that. Um, and so it's a little bit different in that analogy and I, I agree that it's not a, it's not a move violation, but does it carry any jail penalty, a potential jail penalty? Does it carry up to thirty days in jail, a hundred dollars this? Is there any possible jail time if nobody ever pays their fine? Can they face jail time?
I think the city's maximum fine is a hundred dollars, so it's, it's a misdemeanor.
Well, a misdemeanor can carry jail time, so.
If, if somebody has insurance, I mean, if they submit that insurance even early on, they would have no reason to come to court. If they want to come to court and produce their insurance, it's gonna be dealt with. Probably by the prosecutors will deal with that and dismiss the ticket, so I mean.
Well, probably doesn't satisfy the Sixth Amendment, but that's, I'm just asking you as a lawyer, how do we reconcile the fact that you have the right to confront your accuser and you have an automated ser- service from a third party system that's acting on behalf of the law enforcement, which is fine, we can do that with agents of, of law enforcement, but they are, are then a- applying hearsay information to a condition for failure to have insurance?
Well, the camera's taking a picture. Our police are gonna verify the picture, verify the tag.
That's, that's foundation, but that's still hearsay, cause they see, when the camera took that picture, they weren't aware of the situation. Different than being in a cop or with an officer or the camera who can validate that, that what's on the camera is actually what occurred in their life.
If I can just, if I can just, I'll ask the chief, if you're involved in an accident and, uh, you have a mechanism to check with every major insurance company online or, or by query, whether you have an, you know, insurance in place right now. That's, that's the way we do it right now.
Correct.
Okay, and that technology, Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is it a similar technology that you get the ping on the thing and that same query takes place? Then, then we verify that after that's notified.
That's correct.
So I mean, it's the same mechanism, I think, that, uh.
But, but it is, it's the same mechanism, which is fine. Mechanism isn't the, the issue that I have. It's the, the search, right? It's, it's the running someone's information. If, if you're in a car accident, well, then there's, there's an incident, right? You have a case, you have a reason to have interaction with law enforcement. Right, that's different than just minding your business, driving down the road and your information is being searched. And I don't know, there's probably some cases out there in all the moment and all research just from my own information. I don't support this, cause I, I feel like this is just a way for the city to make money, um, rather than, than protect individual rights. I, it's just my own opinion. I, I support police and law enforcement and we do everything we can to help generate revenue and funding for, for the city and for the law enforcement. I just, for, for me personally, I think this opens up a Pandora's box for lawsuits and challenges for the city, which is gonna be a problem, problematic down the road. There's only five counties in the city that's doing this. We have eighty-two counties. I mean, that's a very small percentage and then there was a comment made by someone at the table, I'm not sure if it was Peter or the mayor that said, that it's in another county and it's been working for a month or so and it's working really well. That's a very smaller, uh, yeah, a month or two ago. It's a very small sample size for how well it's working. Um, so I would be cautious, um, to enter into this agreement and use these cameras in the city of Biloxi until we have a, a better understanding of the law, the legal ramifications moving forward and how well the system works in our city.
Yeah, the city has been doing it, I think, over a year. Uh, that's when Sean Tindall came in and they basically had a, had an agreement about how to proceed going forward between sharing the data between Securix and the state and the city.
Well, if Sean Tindall, if Sean Tindall moved the state legislature to, to create a law and, and the state was involved, I would be more comfortable, but handpicking a couple of counties out of the city because of high density travel, um, I, I just, I don't support it. Um, but that's just my position. Um, um, that's all I have.
Uh, Nick? Uh, Chief, how do you actually get them in? They don't have insurance. Most times they can't afford insurance. They're not gonna buy insurance. So what do you do to actually force them to buy insurance? Are they writing a citation?
Well, it's not able to enforce them, but it's required by law to have insurance.
I know.
It's absolutely required to happen and I'm gonna tell you, being one of those people that's been in an accident lately and the other person didn't have insurance, I, I didn't appreciate it very much. I have to pay the insurance and I think other people should have to pay it too if they're gonna be driving. And driving is not a constitutional right in this state.
I agree with that, but I mean, there's about half of them don't have insurance. And we can't force them to buy insurance and give them a ticket in the mail, they're not gonna get it.
Now, what would we do? Or what would we do? Would we just let them continue to drive with no insurance and run into people that are trying to, to, to do the right thing and maintain insurance?
That's the whole, that's the whole point. This is a, an incentive for them to get insurance.
Totally is.
And be like everyone else. The seventy, you know, uh, uh, whatever the sixty-something percent of the people who do do the right thing. It's an enormous number and if we have a way, you know, you can't drive down that uninsured numbers by every time you get in an accident. This is a way to, to kind of, uh, impact that number. Tw- thirty percent is, is a big number for people driving down the road.
And how can we can't handle one who has a wreck and doesn't have any insurance?
What do we do? Man, this is a, this is a camera to Scott now, but if you have a wreck, I hit you, I have no insurance? Yeah, and they, they take an inquiry to see what you have insurance in fact, right? And it's same technology, same integrated information that the police department uses, that this will be in, in an automated fashion. Then, after it happens, they can insure. The P D will, will follow up on that, so they're not gonna get the ticket unless there have been two levels of, uh, certification. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm saying, just like Chief said, he had a wreck with somebody had no insurance, it wasn't handled at that time. But I don't, please say, if you can, you had a wreck, I hit you, you had no insurance, and what would you do to me?
Well, we would prefer to, to handle that before there's a wreck. We would prefer to provoke people to get insurance before there's an accident. Cause somebody, I'm having to pay this, I'm having to.
And I'm not, I'm not insurance too. Well, that's us. These people are not gonna buy insurance. I don't know what you're gonna do to them. Well, that's, that's my problem, that's the whole thing.
Just like, right now, we're gonna give them a citation. If this passes, we'll give them a citation telling them, you need to get some insurance.
Yeah, those people are not gonna answer that question. They're not buying insurance. Those people that don't buy, not gonna buy. That's, that's the problem.
Mr. Demming?
All right, thank you.
Um, I just, it's just, I guess, the difference in philosophy. I, first, insurance rates are never coming down. I think Obama said it best when, um, he took over the economy and, and he said, well, it didn't get worse. He knows we did this, right? And so it's not gonna come down. It's, um, it may not go up as fast, but we'll never see insurance rates come down. It's just not the way profiteer works. Um, the other thing is.
I, I, I think you're probably right about that, but we have an obligation.
Well, I wanna ask you something, Chief. Did you sue that person that hit you, that you're paying?
No.
Okay, well, that might be, that's the problem. The problem is, this, we have a system to address these issues, right? Um, for address. We have a system here, but we don't use it. Because we feel like the government is an easier tool to fix the system than doing it ourselves. If everybody would sue the people that hit them and did them wrong, this wouldn't occur. What would occur is the government would vary more efficiently and effectively doing the things they're supposed to do.
But you realize why most people don't do that in automobile accidents, because it costs them more for the lawsuit than it would just to go ahead and have their car.
And you know what's gonna happen with this? They're gonna pay a hundred bucks to get back on the road and avoid I-ten or I-one-ten. That's what they'll do. This isn't gonna change anything. It's just gonna change their outs.
And so, but again, I still think we have an obligation, we have an obligation to the citizens, to this city to do our best to force someone who's not following the law to follow the law. I mean, it's, it's like any other, any other lawbreaker.
Well, I, I think, no disrespect to you, Chief, I think it's the system, but I think right now, that's the problem is that we, we decide that we use the government to force people to, to follow the law any means necessary. We have tons of means necessary. We don't use those. We resort to these other profiteers that come to tell us, we can fix this for you, but we'll make a lot of money off it. And, and I have a problem with that. I know there's a better way to do this. We just don't do it. We choose as people not to do it because it's not as easy for us to do it as it is to tell the government to enforce this in a certain way. But that's my position, um, and I was thinking.
But why would, why would he sue them? Pay more money to sue them that they don't have any money to begin with? And assets, nothing?
That's the problem. The problem of the system is you have to do it right for the system. If you want to do it right for the system. So the taxpayers that are paying for this city hall and, and your paycheck and my paycheck, they have nothing to do with it either, right? But we're telling the government to do something, to make something, to, to save us inconvenience. The life is about inconvenience, is doing the right thing. Doing the right thing isn't about convenience.
But at the end of the day, if everyone does jump on board with insurance, then it does help the community. Go ahead, Mr. Gaines.
All right, I, I, I think, I think we didn't cough light and went away from the subject, uh, a whole, a whole way away from the subject. We didn't got into insurance rates and all this other stuff. And what we're talking about here is pretty much preventive maintenance, is what I'm hearing. And unlike the chief, I had a guy who, uh, hit me and, uh, and he didn't have insurance and he ran. And I did take it to court. I took it to court. And the guy didn't show up as normal, but his mother showed up to take the blame. The whole idea was to punish the guy who did the wrong. And what we're trying to do is do prevent, preventive maintenance. And if we can do something small to, uh, handle some preventive maintenance, it's a good thing to keep it from becoming mass, because when he hit me, I didn't get my car fixed. I had to do it myself. And, um, and the person wasn't held accountable. Now, they say parents come and take the blame for them, which you can't sue the parent because they weren't the one that hit you. So I'm in favor of trying this because this is on, uh, there are ten, ten cities from my understanding. Uh, we're not located, we're not honing in on neighborhoods. We're basically looking at the outskirts of the city. People who are coming in and out. And, um, after a year, we can assess it and move forward. Is, am I correct on that?
Yes.
We're gonna look at it after a year, so I don't see any reason we shouldn't give it a shot. And looking at it from a revenue standpoint, it could also benefit the city. Thank you, that's my position.
Do you have any more items to discuss?
I didn't hear, um, Mr. Demming's, uh, rate. You got a rate, hourly rate to defend these cases?
So for my, my next, uh, item, which is item five S's, this is a late addition, uh, to the agenda and this, this deals with Benacom. And I, I just, I'm looking at the figures and they're gonna charge us roughly ninety-three thousand for equipment service annually. And they're gonna charge us this first year eighteen and a half thousand for professional services support. So the total cost of the first year is a hundred and eleven thousand. But in the language in the resolution, it refers to a sum of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I'm trying to figure out all the.
Time. That's the cumulative cost of the contract over the length of the time, the three-year term that this exists.
How, how long is the term?
Years.
Okay, three-year term, that's what that's for, okay.
Service charges and professional fees for your total cost of contract.
Okay, I see, I see it now. I missed the term of three years. So that's a three-year rate. It's two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. I got it. Thank you so much. I missed that. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Demming, you got anything to discuss? Mr. Gaines?
None.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple of things. Just like the one you just talked about, Rachel, what do you get for this? What is, what is this supposed to be doing?
Voiceover, voiceover IP phone service.
These are our voiceover IP phone services. They serve most of our city needs. We still have a few copper lines that are acquired, uh, for the police department. Fire may have some as well, but the savings is significant to go to voiceover IP from the copper wires. Uh, you know, we've got, I was saying we're here to tell us exactly how many lines we actually have. But for example, just to my desk, there are two lines on a copper wire. That's eighty-five dollars a month for each line. This is pennies to, for those two lines that go to my desk. And you have to expand that across the entire city. So the voiceover IP is a great way for us to go. We've done it successfully for years. Uh, we went to this in twenty fifteen, I believe.
To a hundred thousand for the whole city?
Yeah, correct.
So how many phone lines are you talking about? Quite a few of them?
I believe it's over seven hundred lines.
Okay. And why are you up there on the Ps and Qs? You know, they all say, mind your Ps and Qs.
Let's see what those are.
And that's, uh, y'all, if people don't know, that's a punch court. That's where they come from, Ps and Qs. So what, uh, this is all to do with money you move from one to the other?
Yes, um, we've had a project at the Pops Ferry Causeway that was south of the gate, our new portions. Last time we approved the resolution to request a transfer of funding of the four thousand dollars that was left in that south of the gate was from the floating docks to the new Pops Ferry project, which is to restore the pier and demolish the sections that can't be, that was damaged in Zeta. So we just moved that over there. We're amending the budget and then closing that grant. And then we have to submit an amended application, which is the original amount plus the four thousand dollars that we've transferred. It, it's just an administrative matter.
Okay. And on, uh, Mike on the, on F? on F, we, oh, we listed four hundred thousand? You used to get three seventy-five from the city, did uh, taxes go up? The millage is worth more money now?
That's because it's a mill that they owe us a mill a year and the mill has gotten bigger, so the amount we get is a little bit more. It's gone from like three seventy-five up to well over four hundred thousand a quarter.
The reappraisal did that, too. All the property in the county was reappraised, so the total, total of one mill increased.
Yeah. I didn't, I'm just saying, but you always do a three seventy-five for a couple of years and that's more than a thousand, which is good. That's a little plus, one fifty-five. And uh, I tell you, on the C, we spent forty-five dollars for this uh, public works and exactly what you said, we, we're getting for forty thousand. And what is this supposed to do for the public works department?
Yeah, well, I, I looked at the resolution, it's for two separate intersections. One is at um, Rodenburg and Pass and one is at Division and Benaki. And uh, they've got those new overhanging traffic signals there. So I think these are the mounts, the cameras now, exactly, exactly what they do and what they time, yeah. That's a billary question, I guess they, I guess they help control the traffic light. You've been sitting there and nobody's coming, or you know, if it's green, if you're on pass road, nobody's sitting at the traffic light at Benaki, then it, then it stays green longer.
Is that a one-time cost of forty thousand, thirty-nine, whatever?
Yes. Yes. It's basically twenty thousand a camera, I guess it's one time.
That includes installation.
And on uh, the base shop, we have a new team coming in. And it's going to be, he dealing with the base shop and also upstairs, he, this little company, he's leasing both of them. The LLC is.
It, it's a different company, but it's some uh, combined ownership, I mean, combined partners, uh, different uh, I think the upstairs uh, there's some partners in that one and some partners in below, but there's some shared partners. But we think they'll get along better.
I know, taking a shot too, the man with G, and it's like three and a half million. What were you planning on doing with that money if we do get that grant?
Which, which one is it? Which resolution, G?
G.
G is involved. That's the tip project.
This is for the expansion of uh, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, this is for the expansion of Trinners Boulevard from the interstate north to the um, to the intersection of Bull Market Road. Basically, i- it's going to just widen that road, make it more of a boulevard, so we can accommodate the traffic that's anticipated from the medieval complex.
And that's where the, you know, at that foot, at Interstate ten, at the south part of that, is where about a hundred million dollars in, in complex will be uh, built.
So how wide are you going to make it?
Four lane, five lane, really.
Hmm, five lane.
Five lane, so do you have anything else?
I mean, what, yeah, we're going to add.
Short cut road and some, some of the other.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to do some work on shortcut, we're going to add sidewalks, we'll actually add multi-use pathways, which will be for sidewalks, pedestrians and bicycles. Um, curb, probably curb and gutter.
I understand, Alson, this resolution is just approving our ability to, our, getting our permission from the council to apply for this transportation improvement program, tip program, where we get a lot of indirect uh, M dot funding. And so we don't, there's no, I mean, there's no money coming to us yet, we're just applying for the program.
I don't know, but.
Eventually we'll be in, if we are approved, then it'll, the tip will be pronounced and uh, and then at that point, we'll recognize the money.
Yeah, which won't be probably till August, September timeframe.
Yeah. I said, I had no problem with that, I was just going to say, if there's anything we can do inside the city of Bucks, we need a lot of our roads. Division Street, Bayview, Holiday Avenue, Irish Hill, I mean, there's a lot of streets we need. I mean, I drive it so bad, it jams on top of each other. I don't know if there's something else that we could apply for to help the city itself and increase the roadways inside the city of Bucks itself.
This particular instance is, is pretty much, you know, uh, at the end of some conversations in Jackson with regard to Brad White and M Dot and a few of the legislators were there. So I mean, it's, it's the path to, to at least acquire this improvement. Uh, and you know, eventually, yeah, we're doing some things at the southeast, at Highway ninety for twenty day, and we expect uh, uh, the okay to, to bid for that service, so that's another part of that old corridor from sixty-seven all the way to Highway ninety and become a state road. So that's in addition, in addition to uh, uh, the expansion of Popster Road, this will be part of a, a state road and it's uh, the grand plan.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, just last one, uh, feel it's about, we got away from a thing on O, and that's not true, it's all about insurance. The whole thing is about insurance, collecting insurance, forcing people to buy insurance, so it's all about insurance, period. Can it work? I don't see how, people ain't going to buy insurance, not buying insurance. So I can't support that one. That's it for me, I can.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of the consent agenda? Unanimous votes? Exception of O for Demming and as well as Lawrence, correct? O, uh-huh. Any other exceptions?
What, yeah, one question, uh, on the routine agenda.
Uh, no, no, we'll get that, I'll be wait. I'll get that in a minute. Thank you.
Any other exceptions? If not, moving on to code enforcement?
Item A, Theodore C. Cooley, two twenty-seven Main Street, this property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of Theora? Theodora, uh, two-two-seven Main Street? If not, this case is closed.
Item B, Chloe Pearson, two seventy-four Main Street, that case has been resolved. Item C, T T L B L LLC, seventeen seventy-eight Corley Street, this property is still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of T T L B L LLC at seventeen seventy-eight Corley Street? If not, this case is closed. Do you have a motion on the routine agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tizdale, any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, there's uh, I don't know, is it Walter? I don't, I didn't see.
I'm sick. Okay, I can't, I'll have to give you a report when he, when he gets back.
I think the remainder of two point two million is, is, is on the way in, in state, on step four of, of that. Uh, we're not going to be spending anything for another three weeks.
All right, that's, that's good news, so we got the two point two, that's good. Uh, there's a question, uh, I know they have some bills with the D case. Um, with the Van D case, and I don't know if, has he actually did anything and said y'all are supposed to meet when it begins this week? I don't know if y'all did it or not, we're a lot of town.
You know, on Fridays and again, the, the uh, with, with James and, and uh, I think we expect some action on Lopez, the same one, Murph Street as far as the bricklaying. But we, you know, hitting pretty good on what's happening. I think uh, the uh, the movement on uh, the same line was going into the curves and Holiday Avenue and uh, Red Duke A Curve and Clayborne. Base Coach is hot on the agenda, but I think they've done some things right at Cooley Street. Well, temporary pay and uh, curbing, so that's the beginning for us to get finished with uh, that, I think, twenty-four. Uh, March of twenty-four, that should be wrapped up. Now, and then uh, you've got probably, and initially last week, when the discussion was on uh, uh, days, days extension. There in the west, which is uh, Blue Wall one, two and three, uh, Blue Wall one, two, I'm not sure which numbers, but uh, there, two ones that had a schedule there.
Yeah, well, I had uh, several phone calls about Crawford Street being closed, people can't get in and out of it. So I was going to talk to all about that, so what's, what's going on with Crawford Street? If you find time, I mean, it's a pretty some mess, you can't get, people can't get home. And we say we take care of people.
Well, let me say this, it drove today, okay? And uh, we watch it, I, I drive that pretty much every day around lunchtime. And there's some everyday deep shore connectivity going on at uh, Rose and, and Crawford and Holiday Avenue. That's, they're, they're in action right now. So we, we stay on top of that and we'll, you know, have a, um, you know, moment with, with them Friday, like we do every Friday.
Well, the, the question was, if one lady left and she went to the grocery store, come back and get back down the street. So I don't know, how did he do that, did he just close the streets off and?
Well, it should be giving them access to get to it, they should be, I mean, I, I can.
Yeah, I drive a street too, so I mean, I would do the same to you, you drive there.
What is the address, it's a good thing, what is the address, did you know?
I have a phone number, uh, one was two twenty-seven, I'll find the other one for you.
Hocky, uh, Hocky Street?
No, uh, Crawford, but it was all about Crawford Street.
Okay.
So I mean, I'm just going to double check them and if people need an update, I know it's a mess and it's working and the product is coming. But it's just that when you live there, every day, it seems like ten times worse than it normally is. Because you're riding through the mud and the mess to get home. So, that's the matter. But anyway, anything that, uh, need cases, money, I'm going to vote against that on the routine in general. So I'm just going to keep doing it until he actually gets some stuff done he's supposed to do.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor of the routine agenda? Unanimous votes? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Hello.
Motion by Mr. Demming, second by Mr. Gaines.
I think, I think George Lawrence wanted to record someone.
Yeah, we're going to close it in honor of Pac Luz, they retired from the city after all those years of the base shop. So just the best luck to him, I just want him closed, in honor of Pac Luz.
All second.
We all second it.
Lawrence.
Lawrence.